Okay. And then if you just go to the next one, so David can have his little script. We can get started.
Right, thanks. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Boston Landmarks Commission Design Review Committee of on April twenty second twenty twenty five at five oh six P M. And present, the commissioners present this evening are Orlando, Haney, and myself, Baraducci. So you can participate in this hearing by going to the Zoom meeting link posted in our agenda online at zoom dot U S slash J slash nine eight six nine two two zero zero eight five six or by calling three zero one seven one five eight five nine two and entering meeting ID number nine eight six nine two two zero zero eight five six. You may also submit written comments to us via email at B L C at boston dot gov. So in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Orders spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March twenty eight twenty twenty five amendment, extending the suspension of these provisions until June thirty twenty twenty seven. We're conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Boston Landmarks Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has been adjourned. And at this point, we ask if there are any media or elected officials present. If you could identify yourselves by press, by pressing the raise your hand prompt in the Zoom hearing or in the Zoom platform and state your name, title, and affiliation.
David, I just wanted to mention that Commissioner Fadi Samaha is here and Sarah Lawton, Preservation Assistant, also joined us. So Liz, if you could make them co-hosts, that would be great, along with Jeffrey Haney.
Okay, and then actually, I could probably read in the Do we have the next slide? I can read the, I don't have the agenda up in front of me to read the next. Okay, here we go. All right, so the, the one item that the Design Review Committee has this evening is the following. Application number two five point zero seven six zero. And it's at two seventy six Washington Street, the Blank Street Coffee. And it's regarding installation of new louver panels and new signage. So if the applicant can introduce yourselves and you can get started.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Robin Kiranen. I'm an architect with Colliers Engineering Design. I'm the applicant on behalf of Blank Street Coffee. Two of our representatives from Blank Street are on as well, as well, Evan, sorry, Matt Dwell and Evan. And they can speak a little bit to the signage, but our application has two parts. Will you be sharing the, the presentation or did you want me to pull it up?
We can share it, and if you could just say next slide, if Liz, you're okay with that. Great. You're muted, Liz.
Sorry about that.
And then why don't we make Matt and Evan co-hosts? So, and Jeff Haney. And I'm sorry for the delay. We're just, we're getting Elizabeth into the running the hearing role. So when you click, like when you click them as co-hosts, you then have to answer a question that says like, do you really want to make this person a co-host? And you have to hit yes, so. It, it pops up in like a different part of your screen.
L C, do you wanna, can you open yours?
Yeah.
I will.
The Adobe Acrobat reader is not cooperating.
Yeah.
And Robin, could you give us Evan's last name?
Yes, I can. Evan, you wanna jump in? Do, do, does Matt and Evan want to introduce yourselves so you can share what your role is with Blank Street?
I think we have to make them co-hosts first.
Okay.
I just asked them to unmute themselves, so they should be, Matt, you, Matt, you can unmute yourself and let us.
Yes, hi, I'm here. I'm, I'm Matt Duel. I am the Blank Street Construction Manager for our Boston Stores. And Evan Mateen, I don't know if he's on mute or not, but he is our direct Director of Development, so real estate construction facilities. Great, thank you.
So while we're waiting for the screen share, so we have two parts of the application for tonight. I can give a little bit of back backstory here. So we wanted to capture both the proposed exterior signage as well as the proposed louver replacement along Spring Lane. So those are both captured in this one application, kind of as a two-part approach. I think, and I can talk a little bit to the history of the building while we're waiting. But the building is the Winthrop Building on the corner of Seven Water Street and two seventy six Washington Street. There you go. There are some photos. Thank you. So it is a landmarks building. And part of what we're trying to do with the louver replacement is limiting our modifications to Spring Lane, as we did not want to propose any modifications beyond signage to the primary frontage streets, which are Washington and Water. Part of our challenge with this, this space is the building is very old and it does not have the proper code compliant intake and exhaust separation. So the only way we can properly condition the space or get closer to code complacency is to try and modify the louvers. We typically intake and exhaust need to be separated by a ten-foot linear distance. We do not have that at this location, nor can we achieve that. But the proposed, yeah, right there, that, right there on Spring Lane. We are the second, on that image, we are the right side below the end or right above the entry door. So those existing louvers are spaced with about a four-foot separation between the two of them. And we were advised by the billing department that they would work with us to achieve better code complacency on the exhaust intake separation, knowing that it is physically impossible to achieve the ten-foot minimum distance. So part of our objective to achieve that is to have the louvers changed from a horizontal orientation to a vertical orientation where we can direct the air away from one another. We can direct the exhaust away from the intake. And so essentially, it's same style of louver. It would be a custom louver. But the space would be closer, about three-quarter inches on center to achieve that. And part of the, the challenge is it has to be a custom louver because that angled cant at the top of the left and the right louver is part of the building design. It is not an applique that can be pulled off and reattached. So our intent is to leave the storefront fully intact, remove the louv, delicately remove the louvers and replace them with a vertical style. Our space is only the right portion of that, the, the two parts windows there. So we understand, and that's really where we're only proposed modifications, but understanding that they might look odd with the adjacent tenant space remaining to be horizontal. So as an option, we have included replacing those, and it's something we've talked about with the landlord. Because it will be a similar situation for when a tenant goes into that corner space. They do not have the required code compliance to utilize those louvers either. So if you would like to go to next slide, please. We can, Matt and Evan, do you guys want to speak some, to some of the exterior signage, or did you want me to?
Can you zoom in closer on these? Because it's hard to see some of these photos that are kind of small on the screen.
Hi, everyone. I think I now have permission to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Let me see if I can turn my camera on too.
Yeah. Download it in order, in order to zoom in, but give me a minute and I will.
No worries.
If it would be helpful, we can stay on the louver, which may not require the zooming in as much as the, we can come back to the signage if that's helpful.
Okay, let me just go to whatever.
Okay.
Okay, so this should, I should be able to zoom in on this. Let me know if that's working. Is that a little bit bigger?
Yeah, this is better now, yes.
Okay, all right, so let's go. Let's go to the louvers first. Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, we can stay on the louver since we, we started with that. So those were the existing photos. If you continue down, we can just breeze right past the signage page. So right here, so this is the proposed louver that is a custom louver that does have the angled, the canted corners. So these would be custom modify or custom fabricated for our existing opening. And then these would be painted the same color as the storefront, which the landlord has provided that exact color. So I provided some context on the left of kind of the rationale of why we're doing this. This is nearly not an aesthetic change. It's really more of to achieve the exhaust code compliance. Next slide, please. So we've included a rendering, a mock-up of what the vertical louver replacement would look like. So as you've seen here, it's just the right portion of this, the series of storefront. So vertical louver, the spacing is a little smaller to help to prevent wind-driven rain from entering. Typically, louvers are of that horizontal orientation, orientation canted downward to prevent rain or snow from intaking. So with the vertical application, they do need to be spaced a little closer together, and there is a integral bird screen as well. So aesthetically, it does look slightly different, which is why we included option two, if you can go to the next slide, please.
Yep.
If, if it is a preference to replace all four, so that way the louvers in this direct adjacency can better correlate to one another. As you can see on this image on the far, far right side, there are some additional horizontal louvers, but they're far enough away that we didn't felt, feel like this would, you know, visually impact that. But being as this, the, these two are in kind of a, let's call it a, you know, almost married together here on the corner, that there is a relationship between how those louvers are visually interpreted.
Could I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
Sorry. So is this where we're saying that your space is to the right and then it's a different tenant to the left?
Correct. And although the clean on the, the left there does say that it was applied on the wrong windows, but yeah, so this is kind of an irregular space. It actually previously was three tenant spaces. We've consolidated to take the corner of Washington and Water Street as well as the part that's kind of steps down under Water Street, and then it snakes back to Spring Lane. So the area, the tenant space in the left image is a separate retail tenant. It is currently vacant. And our discussions with the landlord is that tenant, whoever it ends up being, will have the same hardships that Blank Street has related to H V A C. So it's, they're open to doing this as well to, to help future-proof that space. If this is your preferred option.
Got it. Thank, thank you for clarifying.
So I think that, that's basically the, the, you know, request for the recommender for the louver replacement, if we want to slide back up to signage.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to talk about signage.
And I'm here, I'm here too. I was able to get no speaking privileges as well, so I'm happy to chat if anyone wants to hear from me too.
So.
Sorry, go ahead.
As, as we're looking at this, just explain how these spaces are not connected to what we were just looking at. So they're like, it's separate from what we were just looking at in physical space.
Yeah, so the, the images that we were just looking at are Spring Lane. So if you can zoom into the image on the upper left on this, you can help kind of. So the Blank Street space is on the corner where you have the green pier. The entry door is directly behind that pier. It's kind of hidden in the sightline. And then we would be taking all the going down the left side of this image, which is Seven Water Street, all the way, yep, and to get to those very, you know, bedazzled storefront windows there. All of that is remaining intact. And that is specifically why we wanted to deliver replacement on Spring Lane, is we did not want to modify the facade, either one of these facades. So the, to the right half of this image, we see of the two Blank Street signs on the corner. Going to the right, separated by that vertical pier there, that is a separate tenant space. So that right part of the corner that then wraps to Spring Lane into the first portion of the, the storefront that we just looked at, that is a separate retail space.
That, that whole corner from, from the corner column to the far right and then going over to the middle column, that's a different space.
Not the corner call, I'm sorry, the, let's call it the column between the two storefronts on the right side, which is Washington Street.
Yeah. All right. And so then where is Spring Lane in relation to, to this? It's around?
Around the corner, yeah.
Yeah, around the right corner that we're looking at.
And it is a pedestrian access walkway. It is not a vehicular road.
Yeah, all right.
It's tricky space because it, it's like an interior maze to get to where it comes out.
Hmm.
On Spring Lane.
So for, for a little more clarity, our space is basically an L shape that encapsulates the other tenant space. And the short end of the L is what ends at Spring Lane where we were just looking.
And that is not currently occupied, right?
That's, yes, all of these spaces are currently vacant.
Okay, so we, when the study report for this was written, there was a little cellphone shop in the right-hand side of the storefront, and that's not there anymore.
Correct.
Okay, so tell me what you want me to do. Do you want me to go back out a little bit?
Yeah, if you want to zoom out, man, if you want to jump in on signage.
Yes, so the two signs that we have that are going on the storefront on either corner, those are hand-painted directly onto the building, onto the facade there. And then the other sign that we had that comes off that center column, that corner column, is a blade sign, which matches what was there when the previous tenant was there years ago. And the blade sign is illuminated. And then you can see the, the dimensions on there. So for the blade sign, we're, it's a twenty-four by, I believe it's twenty-four by twenty-four square. That comes off with a bracket, which entails to be twenty-eight inches long.
And we know this is a, you know, we respect the historical nature of the building. It's a beautiful building. That's a, a large part of the reason why we wanted to open a cafe in it. We really love taking aesthetic spaces and you know, just the, trying not to change them and just improve upon the existing space. And so when you, when we look back over the last ten years of Google Maps, we saw that formerly the facades signage were painted on in, in white letters, which is why we've done that as opposed to any illuminated signage for the facade signage. And then we also saw that previous tenants were allowed to have, you know, their brand-colored blade sign. So we figured that that would be a, a great compromise to, to have a painted facade sign, but then the, the colored blade sign.
Do you have a photo of the, what the previous tenant had?
Yes, if you zoom in on the top right, the picture on the top right shows the red sign.
Okay.
It was in a different location, David. It was all the way to the right of the corner that goes down Spring Street, uh, Spring Lane.
Oh, this is the opposite, so the further corner down to the right. I see, I see.
Sorry, just for one sec. Liz, can you, can you make Jeffrey Haney a co-host?
Yes, he's been made a co-host.
Oh, great, okay. Jeff, you jump in for sure.
Thank you. The, the grill areas, do, does the cafe need the entire free air area, both grills for this to operate?
Go ahead, Robin.
Robin or Matt, can you answer that?
Robin's on mute, but yes, we do, and we share with the, there's two building ducts that are coming out, so one exhaust and one intake on each, on each louver. So that's what we're sharing with them.
And it, why is it not possible to do the directional veins behind the current existing horizontal veins?
I don't think you can. I, I think you lose the airflow. We have to maintain a certain C F M in order for the space to function. I don't think that that is, it, it would, it would work. It would. That I guess it's not something we, we explored because we would need the, I don't know, I, I guess it's not something we explored. We don't have, we have limited space on the interior, as Matt said. The right louver in our space is actually, both louvers are currently being utilized by the base building to feed and exhaust from the basement. So we have to then shift their louvers or shift their ductwork over and stack ours above in order to provide intake for our space and exhaust for our restroom. So we have limited space of what we can modify, and I don't think we have the depth in there. The louver on the right, there's actually a chase like, about a foot behind there that then goes down to the basement. So we're dealing with quite a few challenges related to the, you know, the existing conditions.
Because I think I've done this before on a slightly smaller scale, but there, there must be a tremendous head height, probably like around ten feet, standing inside to the underside of the, I guess, is there a soffit under, underneath the ductwork inside the building?
Currently, right now, it's open. So yeah, we do have a bit of head height in here. So right now, the, the ceiling height goes upwards to the top of those louvers. And this is going to be a back-of-house space. So we are going to have, we have to have an acoustic ceiling. But we are going to have that aligned with the, the horizontal, the existing horizontal mullion.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so are you, you're finished with your presentation for both the signs and the louvers? Am I correct?
Yes, if there's any, any further questions, we can answer.
Yeah, I've got some questions on, well, actually, the, the, the sign as well, but let's get to the, the louvers. Now, when you say there's two options, meaning you can just choose to do your storefront and not do the one on the other side, even though that will be a future tenant.
Correct.
All right. So in this view, I know it's the same louver, but we're looking at it in two different angles. So the one on the left seems to be a lot more a, a lot more vertical lines and less, more, I don't know, it's hard to describe. Is it more void than, than physical louver or, or the opposite? Because they're, they're different on each side.
I think it's just the optics of this render.
Yeah, I know. I, and that's what I'm trying to understand, because now we are going to be faced with an issue of optics because of the verticality versus with the horizontal, there's no issue with optics. They'll always look uniform. So I know in the drawing that you showed, the cross-section of the louver, it's kind of like a V shape inside the full, the, yeah, it's okay, there it is there. So it's like a V shape, so. In looking at that, what, what is, what are the fins? Are they just very thin? So if you're looking at this now and you're standing to the, to the left side of this drawing, and you look at it, you're going to see more darkness because you're, you're, you're seeing less of the fin and more of the void, right? And then if you're on the right side, you're going to see more of the fin and, and almost no dark voids.
I think you're going to see more of the, the green color itself. You, you don't have, so the reason for kind of the V-shaped formation is to deflect from wind-driven rain getting into the space. So the spacing is about three-quarter inches on center from blade to blade, which as opposed to like right now, the current louver is probably closer to about two inches because it's a straight shot and it's just directing air downward. So I think that the optics are, it is going to appear more like a, not a solid green but a more consistent green as opposed to kind of a shaded green right now where you have, you know, where you see like the, the dark void beyond.
All right, and so both cor, for each corner, say you do both yours and the, and the future tenant, that those louvers will have the positioning of what your plan view shows. That, that will be the same for each of those four panels. You're not going to like turn them and have a mirror image, I guess that was what I'm saying.
So, yes, so they would be directing out away from one another. So this is, this is a rendering, so it's, it's not a hundred percent accurate. But yes, so the intent is we're trying to move the exhaust away from the intake. So they're basically going to be opposite applications where we're pushing air away from each other. That's the whole driver of this. If we were just doing a straight louver, it would be the same as if it were horizontal. So we need to kind of push the air, the exhaust away from the air, so it's not getting sucked back in.
All right, so they're, so they're gonna, they're gonna look different when you're standing on like this.
Lightly, yes.
You know.
And the thought is the, that, in, in the, the ones closest to the corner there, both of those would be intake. So those would be kind of like, let's say the opposite of one another, which would be the opposite of the others, because the, currently the left side for the Blank Street space is in a, an exhaust, or sorry, is an intake. So we need that to remain an intake because it's over a door. We cannot exhaust over a door. And the right is currently an exhaust. So we're going to maintain the function right now thinking that then the tenant on the left, if we opt, if you guys preferred to do all four louvers because there's more visual continuity, it would follow that same. So the corners would be the intake and the outer edges would be the exhaust.
And then the outer edges that, that are the exhaust, they will be such that the, the air is going to go one to the far right and the other one to the far left. So
Correct.
when you look, when you're standing at the corner, you're going to see the, the, the way the, the sunlight or whatever reflects onto the louvers, they're going to look different each side, I guess is what I'm saying. We're going to lose a uniformity here, so. Which is, I mean, ordinarily, the idea of not having it be uniform is fine, but then that means they're going to look different and then you're, it's going to be more distracting to the eye. That's what I'm trying to do is calm down the you know, the differences in, in what we're going to physically see here, but obviously, I don't, you, you, it sounds like that can't be avoided. So, and then where is this bird screen you talk about? Is it, is it on the external surface over these fins? Or is it on the other side behind?
It's, it's, it's to the interior, so you don't, you don't see.
Don't see that. Yeah, okay. All right. Uh, all right, so then let's get to the the sign here. I think, I mean, just, I'm just a little concerned about putting holes into this. This is cast iron, all of this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So can I just, can a little, add a little staff comment that I missed? We viewed these. I didn't understand that the blade sign was illuminated, even though it very clearly says that it was. I'm sorry, I just didn't catch it. And that's not something that I think is appropriate here in, from a staff perspective, just in terms of the the look of the historic building, the historic cast front. So that's one thing I didn't say on my staff comments that I should have said.
That the sign itself is inappropriate.
The, the illumination of the sign, I don't, I don't think a blade sign is inappropriate. I, you know, I share the concern where we're not reusing the old blade sign location.
Right.
So I don't know if the applicant knows if there are existing holes that could be reused. I
Yeah.
It would kind of require a little site visit, but.
Yeah, yeah, or for that matter, if you, when that sign, the old sign is removed. Yeah, yeah, or for that matter, if you, when that sign, the old sign is removed, how do you, how can you repair? The holes. That are there without, I mean, it's easy to do that with, with masonry, but I don't know. What the procedure would be for, for uh, metal, cuz you certainly don't wanna have it, have it be an open hole.
Right, so when the cell phone sign, the blade sign was removed. Is that just, are they just open holes, or are they patched in some way, if anyone knows?
I'm, I'm looking through our photos right now, one moment.
And also, the other question is the, the sign that's removed, or going to be removed, the blade sign, is that currently internally lit or not?
That sign is not internally lit, and that sign was, was already removed, so I believe it has already been patched like quite some time ago.
Oh, all right, so it was successfully patched then?
I, I don't know, I mean. It, yeah, it does. It does, it looks like, um, I, I don't know how current this photo is, but it, the sign is removed and the holes have been plugged. Uh, the photo I have does not look like it's been, the paint has been touched up to it, but it looks like it could be with, um. And it would blend, where you wouldn't know, I can share if you'd like to see that.
Um, well, I guess, I, I, I'm, it's, it's something that you wouldn't be responsible for necessarily, since it's already gone. Um, but you will be responsible for your sign, should you move your location to somewhere else, um, and that's gonna have to be changed. Um, so, I guess, uh, I, I, I'll be curious about the other commissioners feel about. The illumination, but Chelsea, the, the staff comments on the illumination is that you feel it's, it does not contribute to the historic character. By having it be illuminated.
Right, and also, there are several street lights near this corner, so, you know, it's not a dark. Corner at night, at all, like you would be able to see and read.
Yeah.
The face signage and a blue, and a blade sign at this location.
And I think it helps to, if it's not lit, then we don't have to think about how is that conduit gonna get out there. Um, and, and you know, what kind of holes or penetrations will have to be made to accommodate that, so. Um, but, um, all right, so I think I would tend to agree that it would be preferred to not have that sign be lit. Um, I'm not sure what the material is going to be, I guess it's gonna be metal plate, was it gonna be punched, uh, with it, with the letters? Going to be just punched through the metal plate, or, or I, I don't know what that. You know, you didn't really, or at least it doesn't really say very clearly here, um. I'm trying to see if I see here, double, oh, it's aluminum, okay, it's a double-faced aluminum. Uh. And, all right, so like I said, those letters for the, for Blank Street, are they applied to the aluminum, or is it? Uh, are you just punching the holes, punching the openings that, to form those letters?
It is applied to the aluminum.
How, applied to them, okay.
Yes.
And then when you were planning to light it, it was going to be, those letters would go, were gonna be translucent of some kind, and then the, um. The light source was going to be inside that three-inch thickness of the sign?
Correct, so it would just be the, the white letters that would be illuminated, not the whole sign.
Hmm, yeah.
And if it's not illuminated, can it be less than three inches wide, deep, thick, whatever you wanna call it?
Yeah, I think, uh, I mean, I would, I don't know if Matt can chime in here, he would be the expert on that.
Yeah, um, I believe, I believe it can, um, we would just have to check with the sign vendor. Um, because we would still have the, the mounting plate would have to be a certain width, and then the um, the two, um. Support arms that are coming off of there, um, but we can discuss with them the, the thickness of that sign.
The other thing, David, that we've done recently is asked applicants to leave their. Leave their hardware for blade signs in place, so that other people, and fabricate it so that it can take. Someone else's blade sign in the future, um, so that we're not constantly like poke. Punching new.
New holes, yeah, they can, they can utilize the existing um, mounting, um.
Yeah, so if we can think about how that design could work, um. That would be nice, I mean, it's really not.
That's, yeah, I think that's a really good point, Chelsea, I'm, I'm not a fan of the sign at all, I think I can live with it without. It being illuminated, um, but assuming that the, the mounting bracket, as we're. Sitting here planning for you guys to vacate, and you haven't even gotten in there yet, but um, you know, if we can, if we can make that, uh. More of a permanent, uh, watertight. Installation, um, for future use, that would be great.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you'll have to ask your sign person how, how to detail that, so that it can be. Um, easily dismantled and, and leave in place, something that could then be used again, um.
Just one other quick thing to the, um. The height of the sign compared to that camera right there, are we?
Oh, yeah.
Have, have we just thought about that, like, are we blocking that camera?
The reason why we chose that height was because we wanted to match the existing height of the former blade sign from the, the phone shop.
Mm-hmm.
Just because we thought that might be what's preferred, but I think the landlord's preference would be for it to be lower, so it's not blocking the camera. So if that's something that you are all okay with, then of course.
Yes, so just real quick, that, that red sign that was there before, um. That snuck in before the building was designated, so I wouldn't take that as.
Okay.
Um, an example of anything that like.
Got it.
I mean, I don't mean to speak for everyone, but I don't think anyone is like, loves that red sign, so, um, I just wouldn't use that as necessarily a guide, um. It seems. The placement is, I, I see now what your thought process was, it, it seems a little haphazard to me. In comparison to the, um, security camera, and may lose functionality of the camera. Um. So, I would be fine if you, if you wanted to rethink that a little bit, offset that, David, what do you think?
I, I agree, but I don't know how much it has to be done offset to, I, I assuming this is a three hundred and sixty-degree. Uh, camera lens on it, um, so, and then what, uh, how much lower do you need to make it? Uh, I, I forget the dimension of what a minimum height has to be for it to clear, uh, ADA requirements, but uh. I think it's eighty-some-odd inches, I believe, um, but uh. Yeah, I, I think you're gonna have to lower it to, to, otherwise you're gonna not have that camera be functional. Um, and whether that means to make it, to center it vertically. In the, in the plane of where those top half of the windows are, you know, does it have to come down that much so that it becomes centered in that? Um, section, uh, yeah, exactly, you take the center line. You take the center line of that top half, and then that becomes the center line of the sign, I don't know if that's. Still gonna get you what you need, or is that's gonna make the sign too low, but. You know, I guess you, you've gotta, you're gonna have to look into that, and then I guess I'll ask another question too, is it, it doesn't, does it? Make it better if that came off of the corner of the, of that column versus, uh. The side of it?
I think we're open to it, I think whatever your preference is.
Aesthetically, I don't know.
I think the, jump in, I think the attachment would be more, um, invasive at the corner. Because then you'd be, as opposed to right now, you're attached into like the flat surface, as opposed to the ornamental surface, so. I just want to be conscientious that we're not penetrating the decorative element.
Yeah, I mean, this camera mount is.
Yeah.
Not doing great things.
It's a big, it's a big piece that covers a lot of that.
I mean, it's there, and we're used to it, but.
Yeah, okay.
It's probably not what we would approve now.
All right.
Jeffrey, you've had your hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna reiterate the conflict between the security camera and the sign, it's, something's gonna give.
Yeah.
Um, so the other question I had, oh, I, I was just looking at Google View. To look at where the old blade sign was attached, and, and there's a, a ghost that's there. Uh, it's like there, there are four like rivet-like plugs in the cast iron facade. Uh, so there, that's probably the evidence of what was there before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a- as, and getting back to the louvers though, I, you know, I'm thinking that the alley is really narrow, and it's, it's really hard to look up. And see, so I don't, I, I think I probably don't really care about the aesthetics of it. Since there, it's out of, it's over your head, it's over your head and out of view. Uh, I was just looking at the Google View, and the, the current, the top surfaces of all those blades are currently just totally encrusted with dirt and dust, and. I think a, a vertical louver would, um, not have that, uh, that issue of, uh, dirt collecting on those, on the upper surfaces.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but back to, uh, Robin, the, you had a, a catalog cut of the, uh, new louvers. So, so what, so why is it these louvers are shown horizontal?
Um, it's just, that's the, kind of the, they, they, they can be customized. So this specific one, it's more show, to show the angled element, this, there's kind of a two-part customization, so they basically have to build this louver from scratch. To show the cant on the corner, which is crucial because that is what the, the, the existing condition is, and we cannot modify that. But they can be installed, the, the blades can be a vertical orientation, so I apologize, that is, that was a little distracting them, it was more showed our. That imagery was more so to articulate that we can achieve the cant as part of the, the louver, um, fabrication.
All right, so the, the direction in this drawing, this should be running vertical for your application.
Correct, yes.
So you're gonna get that right in the shop drawings, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And then the color, I, I'm assuming they're gonna be able to be painted, they're, you're not, they're not gonna be a factory color that we just have to accept, is that correct?
Correct, they will be the same chrome green, which is the, the storefront color, the storefront color the landlord has provided.
All right, okay, good. Um, all right, I mean, I, you know, I guess we, we'll have to live with it, and also to one other question about the, um. Is there a lot of sound that's gonna come out of these things?
Yeah.
No, oh.
No, we have very, I mean, from, so the only, the intake is just the intake, so there is no sound associated with that. And the exhaust that we're tying into is just a restroom exhaust fan, the restroom is, you know, twenty feet from here, so there's going to be no. This is not like restaurant equipment, this is not a makeup air or anything like that, it's, it's basically just. Exhaust, you know, old restroom air going out and new air coming in.
All right, um, I don't have any other comments, uh, Justine, are you okay with everything here, or?
Yeah, louver, louver I was fine with, um, no issues there. Uh, really just the sign, so I think if we can reevaluate, uh, the height and lose the illumination. Um, did I miss any other provisos?
Well, I think, I think we probably would like to have the, uh, the sign detail then would need to be modified, right? To, to what we want to see, and then that would be, we would have, uh, remand that to staff for review of that detail. And that detail would show the new revised width of the sign, be, it being now whatever thinness we can get. Because of, we don't need to illuminate it, um, and what, go ahead. Oh, I thought somebody said something, sorry, um, and then how, the, um, uh, the mounting detail, to see if the manufacturer can do something to make it.
Right.
Uh, be able to be, the, the bracket itself be able to be preserved while it went the sign being removed, so that's. And that, that will show up on the detail, and then I think staff, it's appropriate for them to just review that.
Um, I know, we're running close to time, but I just, I wanna mention one other thing, um. This, your whole storefront and someone else's storefront, it's, there's a lot of film on windows right now. Even the, in the back on Spring Lane, so can you give us that like a? Are there gonna be any window films when you are up and running?
No, this is just, this is pre-opening just for construction.
Okay, and the stuff that's at the back on Spring Lane, um, these, these films. Which I think are mounted to the outside, those will be gone.
Those were, yeah, those were just a decorative or a cling, yeah, so.
Okay.
The, the area to the right is, we would keep that like opaque like that, um. I don't, Matt, I don't know if you guys wanted to do any side, you know, signage film back there, but the, the coming soon was just temporary signage.
Okay, that's great, um, and just to clarify, up at the front, there won't be any clings.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so if that's it, um, then we will recommend to the full commission to approve. With the proviso of the revised detail being shown to staff regarding the blade sign.
Great, thank, thank you.
You, thank you so much.
Public comment.
Oh, jeez, thank you, Joe.
There is any.
Um, okay, sorry. Uh, yeah, so here we go, members of the public are gonna have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the proposed designation. Comments will be timed by staff, two minutes each, please, uh, do not repeat comments from someone previously to you. Um, so to offer a comment, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform, if you're calling and you cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at B L C at boston.gov. Oh, we have Eric.
Eric, um, so Eric, I am trying to ask you to unmute, let's see if it worked.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, I don't know what's going on with my video, but, um, so. Uh, I am a social work student who was assigned to take part in a, uh, public meeting. Like this, and to, to learn from it, cuz you know, this stuff is very, very important, you know, involved in macro work and mesa work and all that. Important stuff for social work, and I. I, I, I loved it, though at times I was a little bit, uh, unsure if I was properly understanding what was being said. Uh, so is it okay if I just check in with you guys, make sure that like I understood what this was about?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, um, so as I understand it, there is an update to public land, uh. That is a historic landmark that you guys want to make, to make sure that it continues to be usable, um, by everyone. And that, uh, update to it would involve cooperation with some public businesses who might be affected by the changes.
So it's not, it's not a public, it's not, and it's a, it's a privately owned building that was formerly designated. As a Boston landmark.
Okay.
By the Boston Landmarks Commission, and you can read a lot about this building on our website, um. Can you say the name of the historic building, cuz I'm forgetting, Joe Carter.
Windsor Carter.
Windsor Carter, thank you, so that can be accessed at our website, and tonight we were doing design review. Because the new tenant in the space wanted to make some alterations that will affect the outside of the building.
So that makes, that makes sense, thank you, is there a place where I could find this, um, a PowerPoint online?
Yes, yeah, actually, why don't you email us tomorrow, if you can. At B L C at boston.gov, that would be great, because we actually have to get through a little bit more business right now.
Understand, thank you so much, uh, for humoring me.
No worries, um. David, I just wanna, oh, sorry, is there any more public comment, I only saw one hand.
I don't think so, no.
So do you wanna, I know it's a lot, but if we could get this admin stuff out of the way.
Do, uh, read the, uh, read them.
If you don't mind.
If you can pull that up, um.
Can you see it?
Uh, not yet, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I lost.
I can see it. I think maybe.
Might make it a little larger.
Okay.
Uh, oh, here we go, okay. Uh, let me get the pictures here, oh wait, perfect, okay, so, uh, these are, uh, applications that came before the staff, uh, for review. Uh, and they were approved by staff, uh, for their, uh, conformance to the standards and criteria, so. I will read them in here, and then the vote we will take at the full hearing. Um, to, uh, prove of their, uh, fa- um, acceptance of these, uh, applications, so the first is. Uh, two five point zero seven six eight, Boston City Hall, at One City Hall Square, and it's regarding registry. Department constituents improvements, including creating three accessible transaction windows and installation of furniture. Next, two five point zero seven six five, at eighty-nine Broad Street, the Dagny Hotel. Uh, and it was regarding facade improvements, next, two five point zero seven six one. At one twenty-eight Park Street, uh, the Boston Common, and it's, and it's regarding installation of a, uh, Blue Bike Station. Uh, location remanded to staff, and the next is two five point zero five three seven, at ten Post Office Square. Regarding revised exterior signage package, remand to staff, no restaurant signage included. Uh, next, two five point zero seven one one, um, M H T, I'm not sure what those.
Mission Hill Triangle.
Ah, thank you, Mission Hill Triangle, of course, uh, and it's at thirteen, uh, Wigglesworth Street, and it's regarding emergency repair approval. Um, fire escape connecting the balcony to be replaced in kind. Next, uh, two five point zero six seven nine, at seven hundred Boylson Street, and it's regarding install three digital. Uh, people counters at the foyer of the, foyer of the McKim Main Entrance. Uh, one over each of the three exterior doors. Uh, next, two five point zero six seven six, uh, this is the Jamaica Way. Uh, shared use path, and it's regarding, uh, to, it's repaving the Jamaica Way Shared Use Asphalt Path and. uh shared use path, and it's regarding uh to it's repaving the Jamaica Way shared use asphalt path and repair and regrade the surrounding areas of eroded landscape between Willow Pond Road and Perkins Street. A concrete pad for a bike share station at Willow Pond Road will be added. Next, two five point zero six four one, St. Petol Street uh District, and this is seventeen Blackwood Street. Uh, and it's regarding at the front facade and rear elevation, repair and repoint the masonry. Next, two five point zero seven five seven, St. Petol Street again, uh, district. And it's one fifty nine St. Petol Street and regarding at side elevation repair existing fire escape. Next is two five uh point zero six six six, this will be Bay State Road, uh, at seventeen Bay State Road. Um, and it's regarding at roof replace black rubber membrane roof, deck and copper gutter in kind. Next, two five point zero six zero seven, uh, three fifty Jamaica Way. Uh, it is regarding strategic plantings of trees and woodland plants. Next, two five point zero six four five, um, and again, this is the uh oops, what did we just say? Oh, um, I'm sorry, the this is Evans Way rather, and it's regarding a temporary public art walk. Sculpture created by artist Nicholas uh Gallinon for the twenty twenty five Boston Public Art tricentennial, triennial, sorry. Um, next is uh two five point zero seven two three. Um, and this is at, uh, this is Aberdeen, is it? Yeah, so it would be at one uh eighteen seventy one to eighteen seventy five Commonwealth Avenue, and it's regarding restoration of wood outer main doors and entry area woodwork. Uh, and then side light frames and paneling lintels uh at the condo complex. Uh, and that's it. So again, we'll um uh move to have the full commission approve these uh approvals.
Thank you. So we'll have a three minute break while we wait for everyone to come in. And then we'll start the six o'clock hearing. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I see, uh, Alicia Jox is just about to join us and Kirsten Hoffman, so Liz, if you could make them co-hosts.
Yep.
Nuck in.
And Liz, I I can keep sharing unless you want to take.
Uh, why don't you keep sharing? There's something um not quite right with my W reader.
Yeah, you would think that this is like a super easy thing to do, but it's not.
And Jeffrey Gagnon just joined.
Um, for the sake of the person making you um co-host, could commissioners just put your hands up in the app for a minute? It makes it easier for us.
Thank you.
Co-host you. Okay. Dan O'Deo just came in.
Okay, let me grab him.
Yeah.
I'm seeing anybody else, Chelsea.
I don't think so. Thank you, guys, everyone. Oh, um, yeah, John, you got, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great. So Justine, whenever you're ready. Start us off.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. Excellent. All right, uh, good evening. I'm Justine Orlando. Uh, Vice Commissioner of Boston Landmarks, and I'm calling to order a meeting of the Boston Landmarks Commission on April twenty second, two thousand twenty five at six P M. Present are Commissioners Jacques Freeman, Baraducci, Samaha, Hoffman, Gagnon, Amadeo, Ward Hyatt, Haney, and myself, Orlando. Uh, you can participate in this hearing by going to the Zoom meeting link posted in our agenda online at H T T P S colon slash slash zoom dot U S slash J slash nine eight six nine two two zero zero eight five six or by calling one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two and entering the meeting ID number nine eight six nine two two zero zero eight five six. You may also submit written comments to us via email at B L C at boston.gov. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five amendment, extending the suspension of these provisions until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven. We are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Boston Landmarks Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has been adjourned. If there are any media or elected officials present, I would ask that you identify yourself now uh by raising your hand in the app and then by stating your name, title, and affiliation. I see one hand raised.
Everyone, Gabriela Ramirez here on behalf of Boston City Councilor Gabriela Coletta Sapapa's office. Thank you. Okay, I think that's it.
Excellent. Uh, so tonight's hearing, uh, we will have a recap of design review. Uh, we had a uh, design uh review for uh two seventy six Washington Street, the, which will be the Blank Street Coffee, um, as well as uh a vote on administrative approvals, um, which were read into the record at the design review hearing. We will take a vote to ratify the meeting minutes from March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. We will hear uh the study re-report feedback on Old North Church. We will then vote to accept the study report and then vote to designate, followed by an advisory review at sixteen Howe Street, staff updates, and projected adjournment at eight P M. So I think David, if you could uh give us a quick recap uh on design review.
All right, uh, we had just the one uh application to review, and that was a application two five point zero point zero seven six zero. And again, it was two seventy six Washington Street, and it was for the uh Blank Street Coffee House or Coffee Shop. Um, and so the applicant was uh proposing to uh remove uh exit to uh well, four existing horizontal louvers that are currently there over the um uh, you can see here over the uh the storefront windows. Um, and currently they are horizontal in their design and they because of the new codes and such for exhaust intake and outtake, uh, they have to separate further, they have to have more separation between the two. Um, so the solution was to then introduce vertical fins on these louvers versus uh the horizontal, this way with the vertical fins that can uh, the air can be thrown side to side, and then that would provide them with enough distance uh so that they could uh utilize these these openings. So we approve that uh of the the design of these uh new vertical uh louvers. And then the second piece to this was this uh new blade sign that they want to introduce at the corner of, you can see it here in the left photo uh, on the corner column, uh, there is an existing blade sign on the far right photo currently for the vendor that's there. But that sign has been gone, has been removed. Um, so they wanted to, um, we approved the sign basically, but not to have it lit. They wanted to do an internally lit sign. So um, that will change the dimensions of this uh sign now. And then they're also going to need to look at a new position for vertically on that column because there is a surveillance camera that's there, and currently it looks as though that's going to be obstructing that camera. So they may have to lower it a bit. Um, and so we will look at that for, well, and so the the third piece to this that we asked them to look at was so that there isn't this constant uh removal and application, and then reinstallation of signs and new holes and filling holes. We asked that if the sign manufacturer could design the brackets such that if the sign was to be changed or or removed, that they can remove the sign, but keep the brackets and then have anyone else that's putting a new sign in reuse those existing brackets rather than have to take them off. So that all the the revision to the detailing on this signage will be remanded to staff for uh for final approval. So the motion, and then also the grills are going to be painted the same green that's on the on the storefront here. So the um motion is to approve uh as it was presented, and then with proviso that the the staff, the details for the sign will be remanded to staff for final review.
Could I get a second?
I'll second, that's John.
Thank you. Okay, uh, all voting with the exception of Haney. Jacques.
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Baraducci?
Yes.
Samaha?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Gagnon?
Yes.
Amadeo?
Yes.
Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Excellent, and I vote yes.
And as uh Justine just mentioned, there were a series of uh administrative approvals that um I have already read in during the design review. And uh, so the motion would be to, uh, these were, uh, obviously, these were applications that came before staff and they were approved by staff based on their adherence to the standards and criteria. So uh, the motion would be to approve of the staff's approval of these uh items.
And a second?
I'll second again, John.
Thank you, John. All right, and all voting with the exception of Hoffman, Jacques.
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Baraducci?
Yes.
Samaha?
Yes.
Gagnon?
Yes.
Amadeo?
Yes.
Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great, we will now move on to ratification of the meeting minutes. Any uh comments from the group? Great, then I will uh accept a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
All right, I'm going to take Haney on that one, and did I hear Gagnon possibly as a second?
That was a second, yes.
Okay. All right, and all uh voting with the exception of Gagnon. Uh, Jacques.
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Baraducci?
Yes.
Samaha?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Amadeo?
Yes.
Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, uh, next up, we have uh the study report for the Old North Church. Um, and we have a script.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
I will be helping you out with that, Justine.
Um, awesome, Gabby, thank you. All right. Here we go. All right, tonight we'll be considering the designation of the Old North Church and campus in the north end as a Boston landmark. The Boston Landmarks Commission is required to hold a public hearing on all proposed designations following the completion of a study report, which describes the significance of the property and the standards and criteria by which future changes will be evaluated. The study report is made available for the public review and comment for at least three weeks before the hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear the findings of the study report, to hear testimony from the interested parties, and to vote on the proposed designation unless the chair decides to extend the vote to a later date so the commission can acquire more information. I will now ask Gabby to make a brief presentation summarizing the findings of the study report.
Thank you, Justine. On May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, the Boston Landmarks Commission accepted a petition to study the designation of the Old North Church and Campus in the North End as a landmark under chapter seven seven two of the Acts of nineteen seventy five as amended. On April first, twenty twenty five, the Boston Landmarks Commission posted a study report on the proposed landmark. I will now read a summary from the study report. The Christ Church in the city of Boston, known as Old North Church, is one of the most historically significant churches in America. Built between seventeen twenty three and seventeen seventeen forty on Salem Street in Boston's north end, Old North is famous for the two lanterns that were placed in its steeple on the night of April eighteenth, seventeen seventy five to signal the Sons of Liberty in Charlestown that British troops were marching to Lexington and conquered by the shortest route across the Charles River. The Old North Church and Campus became an internationally recognized symbol of freedom thanks to the poem Paul Revere's Ride hidden but written by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow in eighteen sixty on the eve of the Civil War. It is also one of the most visited sites on Boston's Freedom Trail. In addition to its significance as a symbol of American patriotism, Old North has also has strong ties to English traditions, is the oldest standing church building in Boston, and a rare example of Georgian architecture built in the style of Sir Christopher Wren. Today, researchers are working to uncover additional facets of Old North's significance by illuminating the stories of those who have been previously excluded from the broader historical narrative of the church, including its black and indigenous members. The Old North Church campus is listed in the National Register of Historic Places as both an individual property and a contributing building within the Boston National Historic Park District with significance at the national level. Therefore, the Boston Landmarks Commission staff recommends that the commission designate the Old North Church and Campus as a landmark under chapter seven seventy two.
Some thank you, Gabby. Have we uh received any written public feedback?
Yes, we have received two letters, one from the Massachusetts Historical Commission stating that they concur with the recommendation to designate, and one from Boston City Councilor Gabriela Coletta Zapata's office also concurring with the recommendation to designate. And I believe we also have a representative from the counselor's office here with us as well.
Great, um at this time, we will move over to verbal testimony. First, will any legal counsel representing any participant in the hearing, please identify yourself for the record? Please raise your hand in the Zoom using the raise your hand button or press star nine if you are calling in on a phone line. Okay, not seeing any. Uh testimony will now be taken in the following order as specified in the B L C regulations. I'm gonna read through these first and then go back through and call individually, uh so we'll first hear from elected officials. Then from the Boston Planning and Development Agency and the Massachusetts Historical Commission who have statutory review responsibilities, from the property owner, uh from those speaking or submitting verbal testimony at the hearing in support of the designation, from those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing in opposition to the destination designation. Then from those who wish to comment, not necessarily in support or opposition to the des- designation. And then finally, anyone with questions or rebuttals on the testimony, so we're gonna start with any uh elected officials that would like to speak.
Good evening, everyone, as previously mentioned, my name is Gabriela Ramirez, I'm here on behalf of District One Boston City Councilor Gabriela Coletta Zapata. Uh the council would like to go on the record in support of the landmark designation and has submitted a letter to the commission, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Uh now we'll hear from anyone from Boston Planning and Development Agency uh or the Mass Historical Commission. Okay, hearing none, uh from property owners. Hearing none, uh from those speaking uh in support of the designation. Seeing none, uh from those speaking uh in opposition to the designation. Seeing none, from those who wish to comment, not necessarily in support or opposition to the designation. Seeing none, uh from anyone with questions or rebuttals. Figured that was the case, seeing none, um. Okay. Uh at this time, um I now invite commissioners to ask questions or comment on the study report or the proposed designation.
Yeah.
David?
Yeah, hi, I I just have a quick question on this, uh once this uh assuming it would become uh landmarked. I think it was this past week, I know that there was some projections that were made on the on the uh tower surface um and which I thought was actually kind of effective, is that kind of thing gonna be not allowed now with landmarking or or can that or does that have to go through a an application process to do something like that?
Great question. I think we need our expert Joe to answer that, but I I would assume that those are temporary and fleeting.
Yeah, it was temporary, we wouldn't, and it was something that was going to be long term, we would review it, but yeah, something temporary, no. Okay, good, thanks.
I have a
Old North.
Old North um with your hand up, go ahead and identify yourself for the record.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry, I was having a hard time unmuting.
Okay, now you can.
Yeah, so my name is Nikki Stewart, I'm the Executive Director at Old North Illuminated. Um I just wanted to clarify that the projections weren't something that anyone at the church organized. Um we we liked them, but just just to be clear, uh it wasn't something that we organized.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you approve them? I mean, in terms of, were you, were you angry that they had gone ahead and done something like that or?
Uh we were not angry, no.
Okay.
Um if anyone has photos of what was illuminated at that time, I would love to see them or the B L C might keep them in our file, just for future's sake.
I can show you them tomorrow, Chelsea.
Oh, awesome.
I have copies of photos from the artists as well that I can pass on, uh they did, they did reach out after to share photos.
Awesome. Any other commissioner comments? Thanks for that clarification, Nikki, Jeffrey?
I would just say I I really enjoyed reading the study report because sometimes these places seem so familiar. We forget about them and to have something this thorough and this recent, especially given two days ago or four days ago being the the ride anniversary is really, it was great timing and really kind of a nice thing to read at this moment, so thank you for all the work that went into this.
Yeah, props for to Jennifer who figured out how to time this properly. Takes a lot.
Um Jen or Gabby, I was wondering if maybe you could just recap for us um and for the public to the differences uh between the designations that this property um has already received compared to what we are voting on tonight.
Sure. Jen, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, do you wanna go or? Okay, I'm actually um gonna refer to the study report just to make sure that I don't give any incorrect information. Um so let me just find the appropriate section, um which should be under planning context. Uh oh my gosh, this is a thorough study report, sorry, I'm still scrolling, okay, here we go. Um okay, so um the Old North Church has already been designated as a national historic landmark. Um and it is also a Massachusetts Historic Landmark, so it has um that recognition both at the federal and state levels. But I think, you know, most commissioners are probably aware that um even though it's on the National Register that provides a limited amount of protection. The Old North Church, I should say, is also part of the Boston National Historical Park, um so it's also federally recognized in that way. Um but this petition actually came to the Landmarks Commission from the former vicar at Old North. And um sorry, my toddler is here. Um and so that was um actually something that Old North wanted to um they wanted to become a Boston landmark just to ensure that they would have the maximum amount of protection, you know, in perpetuity. Um and so I think that's it, I can also say that the Old North Church has been designated um a site of conscience by the International Coalition of Sites of Conscience, um and that has to do with sort of connecting history and memory with human rights and social justice. Um I don't think that that comes with like legal protections though. Um and I think that's it.
Jen, I'm gonna just add that there is no, when you're a national historic landmark, it's a recognition, but there is no review over any changes to the property. And as a Massachusetts Historic Landmark, um there are some reviews that are um undertaken by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Um but not to the detailed level of standards and guidelines that we have um in the study report for this landmarking.
Yeah, the ones um when I've seen the Massachusetts Historical Landmark um standards, they're often like a page or two. Um and so our standards and criteria would basically be like a lot more detailed and provide a lot more guidance for Old North. Yeah.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, um I just wanted to know um if I I know the Bigelow Courtyard is not within the boundaries of the landmark designation, but it provides an important view corridor up to the Old North Church from Hanover Street. And I'm wondering, is is the Bigelow Courtyard protected under any other um jurisdiction? That would prevent it from being developed for a building, say, that would block that view corridor? Is it protected open space as a part of the Boston Park System?
That's a good question, I don't, does anyone remember the um owner?
But I, let's recognize Old North to see if they would like to respond to that.
Hi, yes, it's a, it's city property, it's it's owned by the city.
Okay, good, thank you. I can sleep at night now.
Uh any other commissioners, uh questions, comments, things to share? All right, uh well, that will include uh tonight's public testimony. And now we will go into our next steps and Gabby, if you could take us through those?
Yeah. As required by the B L C's regulations, written statements may be submitted for the record up until three working days following the hearing to the Boston Landmarks Commission at Twenty City Hall Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts, O two one oh eight. Statements may also be sent to B L C at boston.gov. An extension of time for submitting written testimony and a postponement of the designation vote may be granted tonight at the chair's discretion. The public record of the hearing is available upon advance request to B L C staff at B L C at boston.gov, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh given the testimony uh made tonight, no, give no amendments um to the study report are necessary and the commission has the information needed to proceed with the vote, um. Um, I think we move on to the vote from there, correct, Chelsea?
That's right.
Yep, sorry, I think our our script might
Need to be adjusted.
I I can clarify that.
New uh process, I'm so sorry.
No, uh let me clarify that for you, Justine, I'm sorry, it's a little bit odd that we do have a part in the script saying that we will continue to accept written testimony until Friday at five o'clock. Um that's actually in the B L C regulations and so we will continue to accept that written testimony, it'll be for the record. Um so obviously, you know, it won't affect the vote that happens tonight if the commission votes, but um we'll just still take it for our records.
Excellent, okay, so uh for right now, um the we're gonna move on to the votes and the commission will take two votes. Uh one to accept or not accept the study report for the proposed Boston landmark and the second will be to designate or not designate as a landmark. So uh this will be the first vote, um and I will entertain a motion to accept or not accept the study report for this proposed Boston landmark.
So moved.
To accept or not accept?
To accept.
Okay, and a second for that?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. And all voting uh with the exception of Amadeo. Jacques?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Baraducci?
Yes.
Samaha?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Ganyo?
Yes.
Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Excellent, all right, we're gonna move on to vote number two and I will now accept a motion to accept the designation of the Old Ner- North Church and Campus as a Boston landmark.
So moved.
All right, thank you very much, David. And a second?
I'll second.
Oh. I yield.
Kristen will take yours. Okay, and all voting with the exception of Ward Hyatt. Jacques?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Baraducci?
Yes.
Samaha?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Ganyo?
Yes.
Amadeo?
Yes.
And Haney?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Excellent, uh so the commission uh having voted to designate the landmark this evening means that the staff will create a vote of designation document that will present the details about the property, a the a list of commissioners' votes on the designation and the date of the vote by the B L C. This document will be sent to the city clerk who advances it through the approximately forty-five day mayoral and city council approval process. The mayor shall transmit his or her approval or disapproval to the city council within fifteen days. The city council then has thirty days in which to overturn by a two-thirds vote a designation approved by the mayor. Once the designation document is returned to the B L C by the city clerk, it is ready for its final step recording with the Register of Deeds. And that will conclude this portion of the hearing. Thanks all, and we will move on to an advisory review of sixteen Howe Street. I think we just wanted to make mention for the group that um we have seen this property um in a previous advisory review. Um however, this is a brand new application with a new team, um so just to keep that all in mind as they are working through their presentation.
So I think if we can have presenters raise their hand.
Yeah, Eileen, are you able to unmute and
Hi.
Oh, you are, okay, great.
Hi, how are you?
So do you wanna share your own slides or do you want just to say next slide to me whenever you want?
Uh I think I can share mine, I don't think that's the updated uh rendering showing there, so just to the safe of an argument.
Yeah. So let me stop sharing and then you should be able to share by going to the rectangle with the arrow pointing up.
Okay, just give me one second.
Um Chelsea, I just wanna make a quick note here um that Chris Hart, Commissioner Chris Hart also joined the hearing. Chris, I apologize, I I didn't see when you joined us um to to join in our vote tally. Great.
Okay. All right, just let me know, okay, I guess I can get things started now, all right? So um good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity, as mentioned, this is a um a new application and we understand um this probably was previously uh presented to the historical, but we're coming back um with um a a new revised set, kind of like continuing what was previously revised, but obviously open to to your comments, um. I'm just going to start briefly for the record with some information about the existing uh house, uh which is the small building shown on the uh isometric um sixteen Howe Street, uh which um it has a date of construction on record on um eighteen thirty-six. Uh this tile form, it's a four bay by four bay federal house with federal windows and corner boards under the eaves, attic dormers, front and back, and two interior chimneys. The architect builder is unknown, the exterior material, it's a wood frame, foundation, it's a field stone. Uh the wall trims are made out of wood clapboards and the roof asphalt, uh it's asphalt shingles. Um as far as the context, uh this property is located on Howe Street, a residential street with a built single and double Victorian homes. Uh many housing multiple uh multiple families, but retaining some original details. Uh there's typical triple decker homes added in early uh nineteen hundreds. Uh one larger apartment building at the top of the street where it turns into how how terrace. Uh some homes will maintain, others in need of paint or vinyl sided. Um in regards to the pro- uh proposed uh project here and I'm I'm gonna start scrolling down, let's see if I can go to the, yeah, the schematic site plan. Um it's um right here in the back, it's a two new two-bedroom townhouse with a proposed height of about thirty-four feet uh as an addition to the existing house, uh which is about nine hundred and seventy square feet uh foot. It's a single-family house as we know with a height of about uh twenty-nine feet uh approximately. Uh the main building will be connected by a priestway, which is what we see here in between the buildings. Um this proposal contains two townhouse units with a living area of uh one thousand forty-five square feet um per unit. And let me scroll down a little bit, this is the existing house. And this is the first floor. This is both first floors here. Um it's, it includes a one-car garage on the first floor, a storage area and utility room. Uh on the second floor, uh it will include a living room, a kitchen dining room area. uh, it will include a living room, a kitchen dining room area, uh, and a half bathroom with a mechanical, uh, closet. Uh, and then on the third floor, we have, uh, two bedrooms and a full bathroom. This is the roof plan, uh, where you can see we're trying to come up with dormers to kind of, uh, keep the same blended in with the existing building. Um, the project will maintain the same exterior architectural styles, materials, and style as the existing house. Um, this is a view from the front of the street where this is the existing building and, uh, the new, uh, project in the back where you can basically see forty percent, uh, of the new building. Um, and of, of course, intention is to keep in, stay in harmony with the existing building and, and the context. Um, architectural asphalt shingles will be used for the roof. And then on the new project, uh, we'll, we'll be, we're proposing fiber cement siding. Um, but the intention is to match the existing clapboard siding exposure, uh, which, uh, it's about three and a half inch. And same as the windows and door trims, uh, will be the same with as the existing house. Uh, the clapboard siding that covers the existing house will be repaired and refinished as well as the existing windows, um, which, uh, as you can see here, it's six over six, um, grates on the windows. A driveway will be created to access the garages at the rear. This is the rear elevation of the new house. And additionally, just go up to the site plan here. Um, based on previous plans, we are proposing to remove the, um, the existing side porch. Um, based on historic photos that we have, if I scroll down here, uh, it seems like it's, it's not a significant, we understand it's not a significant, uh, part of the, um, the historic, uh, it, um, of the, of the building. Uh, but of course, we're open to, to any comments. We're just going by what, what we previously saw. It's, it's more just to provide better accessibility uh, on the left side where the driveway is going to be. Then lastly, we are, there's an existing, um, concrete path. These are concrete paths on the side. Uh, this section here is existing. We're just proposing to continue the path on the right side and relocate the trash bins on the right side of the new building, more towards the rear, kind of to keep it far from the existing building in the street. Um, that's all we have for now, and we'll just open for any comments and questions.
Great, I'm gonna, gonna offer some, um, staff comments. Yeah, I'm just gonna mention what my staff comments said in case anyone, um, missed them. Um, we're thrilled with an applicant who is, um, going to respect all of the uh, characteristics of the existing building and keep all, you know, wall configurations, moldings, fireplace, all millwork on the inside of the house needs to remain. Um, so we're, all of the windows are original, so we're, we're looking forward to, um, working with this applicant on sort of the details of that preservation moving forward. And then the others, there are basically two, two staff comments, and that was, one, if there could be a reduction in each of the stories of the new building at the rear, I think we can save some height in this structure so that it aligns a little bit more with the top of the existing, um, chimneys when you're looking at it as a straight elevation. And then I guess I just sort of had a question, and it's not really a staff comment, it's just sort of why the breezeway connection? A- and if you could elaborate on that at, at some point.
So what, uh, you, you, you mentioned about why the breezeway connection?
Yeah.
Consider one structure under code.
Even just, just with a breezeway, you don't need it to be a full, fully, um, constructed wall?
No, with, with the breezeway, it, under code, that's considered part of it. It's, it's connecting, it's, it's one structure. We don't, for, 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 in, th- this, this particular plan meets zoning. There's no variances, it's all within complete code. Uh, the only problem we have is the height, because, uh, you know, to get the two bedrooms and a, a decent living space to, to cover the cost of the construction, considering that the, uh, the historical house is gonna stay the same, uh, the, we'll, we'll, we're able to, we're able to, you know, uh, generate enough income out of the townhouses to pay for the development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanna open it up to commissioners so that they can, um, ask their questions and, um, give their comments. Angela?
Hey, thanks. Um, I was trying to, uh, zoom in on my little laptop, um, but is, are you, is the top peak of the roof at your, at the maximum height allowed?
No, we're, we're, we're a foot below.
A foot below?
Yeah, thirty-five feet is the max.
Okay, one foot below.
The, the original structure actually kind of, it kind of blends in. I mean, the, the picture doesn't do, uh, the new development, uh, justice, but if you look at the, the different angles with the different shots that has been supplied, you can see it's still good-looking design.
Eileen, could you do a rendering?
Sorry, it's just easier to see this in a rendered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Um, it, it just so happens that, and I didn't realize the house was a landmarked structure. Um, but I looked at this house as an open house about seven years ago, and I was in the market for a house, and, um, I was, I, it was very charming. Um, never had considered the potential of adding a, a huge, um, adjacent structure on the property, but, um, but I, 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 I know the house. I still have pictures of it on my, on my phone, probably. It is, uh, it's charming. So the, I, I, the, the big difference here, um, not only just the number of stories, and, and that's, and I totally get it, you need to make your, your numbers work. Um, but to me, the big difference is the roof slope. Um, what is so distinctive about the original house is the roof slope, and if you saw a side elevation, if you could maybe go to that page. Um, I'm not sure if you have the, the slope, um, listed on the drawing, um. But, um, I would guess, there you go. It is, uh, it's a, it's a twelve and twelve, basically, um, which means it's a forty-five degree angle, uh, for every twelve feet, twelve inches over, you're going twelve inches up, and that is just such a distinctive roof form and what gives it its character. And part of the issue that I'm having with the new structure is that one, and most importantly, the roof slope is half of the original building's roof slope. Um, and you could, um, probably, um, get a little closer there if you keep, and if you keep the roof peak where it is and you bring the eaves down on the side, so where the, the, the peak kind of hits the side walls of the building, you will notice in the other elevations that the original house, the, the windows on the first floor are very close to that eve, that horizontal eve line. And again, that's what brings, gives it its, its charm and its, um, it feels, it feels right. In, in the new structure, there is a good, and I can't zoom in far enough, but I would say it's three feet from the top of the windows, and you see it by those two, those three sets of dash lines, right? Um, from the top of the windows to the eve, um, that, again, that, the horizontal line that's going on the sides of the house disappearing away from us in this view. So I, I, I think that that's kind of a major issue for me. Um, the fact that the dormers are also brought out flush with the sides of the house that you see in this view, you, this shows it very clearly. The dormers in the original building are set back a few feet, and that gives it, again, just that it's a nice, it's a nicer relationship. Um, it will affect your square footage a little bit, but not that much, um, um, considering those are dormers and y- those spaces get to be really long and narrow anyway, if you're going all the way out to the exterior wall. Um.
Are, are you more interested in the two front dormers? Do you want it adjusted, or do you want the back dormers adjusted also? Because the back dormers, you really can't see from the front.
True, um, uh, I, I guess I would feel.
We can pull the front dormers in a couple of feet if that's what you want, no problem.
You can actually experience the back dormers when you drive further down the street. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would do it the same, because it's, it, it's kind of like the original house.
We'll pull the dormers in, that's no problem.
Okay, and if you, um, look carefully at the mullion pattern on the attic level windows, they're very horizontal, and you would kind of never see kind of a horizontal, um, proportioned, um, muntin pattern, um, so look at that.
Want them all together?
Um, no, it just, it means that on those attic, and the attic window in the existing building isn't drawn correctly, because it wouldn't, it isn't a six over six there. It's probably.
Do you want us to eliminate the windows?
No, I'm, I'm not saying eliminate the windows. I'm just saying, um, first draw the window accurately in the original building and then take cues from that in the new building, um. Cause that, it, that definitely is not a, that's not a, um, a nine, a nine over nine in the attic window there.
Six over six, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably a six over six, and I would probably do the same thing in the, in the new building. Um, and then the last thing is just think about shutters and, um, on the other, the side views, um, you know, you have I think shutters in a grouping of two windows, which means you only have, um, a shutter on each kind of exterior outward-facing side, and that's kind of not, not, um, you know, that, that's, it's kind of not, uh, really historically, uh, appropriate.
Do you want to take the shutters off?
Um, I would, I would, I would want you to navigate to that sheet just so I could be reminded what it looks like.
You tell us. If you want us to remove the shutters.
I, I just, I, I am only seeing the si- the other side view, so if you could go to the other sheet, I could.
This direction, and we'll get it done.
Nope, um, nope, go to this side view. Yeah, so over the windows, or, or over the doors, I'm sorry. I just, I don't know, it, either.
No, on the new building.
Windows.
On the new building, over the front door.
Oh, my apologies.
There you go.
Oh, sorry.
You went too far.
That's it, yeah, I see it.
So, I don't know, maybe, maybe other commissioners will feel differently about it, but, uh, you know, it just, it, yeah.
It's, it's true. It's, it's over the front doors where you have ganged windows, the two shutters can't close to close out the light from the windows.
Right.
They'll only close half of each window. So.
Yep.
You, so historically, when that's happened, the shutters have been bifold. And you, you could pull a pair of bifold shutters over the entire window. So the, the shutter should either look like they're authentic or be removed. I think, just over the, just where the windows are ganged over the front doors of the new.
Yeah, whatever you, you tell us to do, that's what we'll do. You want us to remove them?
Yeah.
I didn't say that.
Oh, sorry.
They said they could be bifold shutters. Or if you can't make them bifold shutters to make them look authentic, then remove them.
Yeah. Eileen, I think it might be more useful for you guys just to sort of like record the commissioner's comments and do a little bit less back and forth, just because we have a limited amount of time.
Okay.
Um, Angela, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um, no, except that I think that the, the, the arched top garage doors are not really, uh, they're a little they're a little McMansion looking, um, for this type of house, I think.
It's, um, it's a queen and move on a building that wants to be federal.
Right. Right. But yeah, my biggest issues are the, the roof slope and then that eve. You see it really clearly in this elevation, kind of that, that vertical blank distance between the second floor windows and that eve line. It's just, it's, it's too, it's too much, in my view. And that will help bring the scale of the house down a lot, because the roof is going away from you, and so you don't really, um, appreciate the roof peak quite as much as you do the eve.
Understood.
Okay, we'll adjust it.
Thank you, Angela. Uh, John Freeman, I have you next as a commenter.
I just have a couple of quick questions, uh, before comment. I agree with, um, almost all of the comments that already been made. Are you required to meet the specialized energy code for this new, the new construction here?
Yes.
Yes.
And so does that mean you're gonna do continuous ext- exterior insulation?
What do we do with interior? So what do you use foam insulation for the roof?
But are you, are you being a code?
On the new building.
On the new building? Are you, are you being the code with the continuous exterior insulation?
Uh, no, uh, the way it's been treated, uh, to me, the stretch energy code, um,
It's a special.
Just go with spray foam insulation throughout the interior, uh, it's not related to the ex- with the exterior.
Uh, so, the reason I'm asking the question is because when you are required to do the exterior insulation, it makes meeting the proportions much more difficult. And I just, uh, in the roofs and in the dormers, the kinds of things where they're close to the windows, so I just wondered how you were meeting it and.
Yeah, because it's a two townhouses, I'm, I'm not expecting the stretch energy code to go up to that level. We understand that we, uh, we'll just go with the standard, uh, sheathing, air barriers and, uh, fiber siding on the, on the exterior, and then we'll deal with, yeah, anything related to stretch energy code uh, and interior between the cavities.
Okay. Uh.
Yeah, Eileen, are you using a former ZBA approval?
No.
No, you. Are you?
This is at the right. This is an existing.
Oh, yeah, you said that. So are, is your building permit application a continuation of the old one from several years ago, or is it?
It, it, it is. We're just, we're, we're, uh, with the present, with the present plans, we have no, no violations. We just need to get, uh, all the stuff that you want on the plans, on the plans, and your approval, so we can proceed with construction.
Okay, so John, I, I, I agree with you that it might cause further review with ISD, but I guess, um.
It may change some of the proportions and make it more difficult for them to do some of the things that we're asking.
Say that again, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
He just asked you to repeat yourself.
I said, if, if you had to do the continuous exterior insulation, if that's the way you were gonna meet the code, the specialized code, which is the third tier in Boston, it may make doing some of these things much more difficult, that, that we've been, uh, that's been suggested. And I just would recommend that you meet with staff and keep them apprised, because perhaps staff can help you with some of that.
Okay, I, that's, that's, that's why we wanna make sure we at all, you have requests into a set of plans that you're happy with. And we'll, we'll follow the plans explicitly.
Well, we're asking you to look at that detail, because you might have a situation where you get on-site with a building inspector, and he will ask you to meet the new code.
Whereas. Yeah.
Right.
We will, um, I'm pretty sure, though, in order to get the building permit, we'll need to provide a preliminary, uh, Hearst report done by a stretch energy code professional, and, um, in there, we'll be able to determine if this will be required, just to the save of an argument, but, um.
One thing, so we use, we, you, there's two types of insulation. There's open cell and closed cell. If you use closed cell insulation, you don't need the same thickness of a wall as you do with open cell to meet the stretch code energy. So if there's something with the dormers that we need to make it, uh, narrow, or we can do that, or, uh, with the roof, uh, you know, you, you could do that to, to a point for str- but it's matters, matters what is required, uh. I, I, I'm trying to, yeah, so you're talking about the width of the wall? Is that what your concern is?
Uh, so. Um, yeah, I think it's too technical for this discussion, um, because there, the way this, the code works, there's multiple ways that one can meet it. And I think, I think in Boston, it's a specialized code, but I'm not sure if it applies to this property. Um, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up as a, as something to, to be aware of, both for the applicant and for staff.
Appreciate it.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. We, 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 uh, Okay, okay, I appreciate that, we, we, we uh usually use foam uh open and closed cell, but the closed cell is more dense.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of how the spray foam works.
John, do you have other?
I know, that's fine, I agree with the other um comments and that's why I want to see them that. And by the way, the reason, the proportion of the window panes of glass, which we call lights, is in the old days they would never have been horizontal because it, it was structurally weaker and so the panes of glass, the lights would have almost always been vertical in the proportion and I think that's what Angela was talking about, that may have been misunderstood a little bit. But that's all I have, thank you.
John Amadeo, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, um, first of all, I really appreciate Angela's um comments on the roof slope um because um Angela, had you not commented on it, that would have been my first comment, so thank you. Um, I would like you to scroll to the elevation that juxtaposes the original house with the addition behind it. The front elevation of the original house with the new house behind it. Yeah, there, so I think the roof slope issue also applies to the dormers even though um Angela didn't specifically call out the dormers because here you can see the um original dormers against the old dorm, uh the new dormers and the and the proposed new slope of the new dormers is clearly, you know, not in harmony with the original structure. So, um, I think when you pull back the front dormers and the rear dormers a few feet, um, it'll make the dormer slightly smaller, but it'll also look more squat which isn't really good, you might have to make them narrower as well in order to maintain the sort of vertical proportion of the dormer. Um, and then, you know, by increasing the slope of the roof it will also make the dormer look more vertical, more similar to the ones on the original building. And then the, the second that I will mention is a pet peeve of mine, um, just like you know, everyone's got their own pet peeves, whether it's shutters or roof slopes, um, is the um, the corner boards that um that run up and down the, the corners of the buildings on the front and the sides um and um I think a dead giveaway to um new construction, trying to emulate old is when those proportions aren't done correctly. Um, and maybe it's just a function of the drafting, but I would expect the corner boards to be wider. Um, the ones that run vertically along the corners, um, they, they look very, very narrow and I would expect them to be almost as wide as the shutters.
I agree.
It, otherwise the building doesn't look properly framed. Um, so, um, if you could pay attention to that proportion, that would be great. And then my third comment is really a question, which is you identified that the original structure has a fieldstone foundation, you didn't mention the material of the foundation of the new building, but since it's exposed, I would hope that it would be at least a stone veneer. Is, is that your intent?
The intention is to any exposed concrete uh foundation wall that which we are expecting to be about anything between eight to ten inches to be covered with fieldstone veneer. So we try to match it up here, yeah.
That's great, thank you for clarifying that. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Ava, do you wanna go ahead? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, okay, this, just quick comments, I mean, since we had a whole discussion on the shutters, um, I do want to add that if you're gonna be putting shutters on the windows, that they really, those are too narrow for those windows, the, a true shutter should be at least half the width of of the window, so um I would recommend that, you know, you look at the width of the window and divide it in half and that's basically what your shutters uh, your shutter width ought to be, otherwise they just be fake, uh, so. That's.
Thank you.
That, that's what we're planning, but I, I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. The uh, okay, uh, so how does it proceed from here now?
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, do you have a, any further comments?
Few questions, uh, I, uh, echo everything whatever everybody's been saying. On the new dormers though, um, can, can we uh shrink the roof overhangs on a dormers to more or less emulate the existing dormers? So the, the eve should be much tighter. Okay.
Yeah.
This best existing open one.
Yep.
Yep, and then the other one uh is the roof overhangs on the original house. So the raking end, the slope end, I think they're pretty much flush with the clavards. And on, on the new house, they are overhanging quite a bit. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get a different shadow line cast on this facade, I would like you to, to pull the raking uh roof uh board back closer to the uh, your uh fiber cement uh clavords.
Understood.
The uh, the one elevation that's cut, like the section cut through the breezeway, looking at the new house. Can you scroll to that elevation?
Right, elevation, there it is.
Uh, no, keep going, where, where, where you're looking, we're looking at the two front doors.
Oh.
Right there, um.
Right, so the uh, I'm, I'm, maybe this is just the drafting error, but there's a centerline issue going on with the two front doors. The windows above and the uh, the roof overhang. Can, can you get that resolved so they're all about the same centerline?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the, the second part?
The uh, the, the, the two front doors, the first door, the roof overhang above them and, and the, and the pair of windows directly above it on a second floor, there, none of them are on the same centerline.
I see, thank you.
So someone has to slide them over, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Angela.
Sorry, I have a few more things, um, I'm, I'm on Zillow because uh I can see pictures of the house um on its Zillow listing and um, uh regarding the eve um on the original house, it actually has a interesting kind of resolution, it has like a little it turns on the gable end, um, and if you look it up, you will, you will all see it. Uh, oh, there it is right there, um, which isn't, I think, drawn correctly, um, and it might be something you consider doing in the new building, um, also the built, the original house doesn't have shutters, um, it, maybe it did have shutters originally, um, just.
There was a historic photo in this slide deck that did show.
Okay, okay. Gotcha, yeah, I see it, and then um existing windows are draw, are not drawn correctly, they're the original windows are six over six and I think they're drawn as nine over nine.
Right.
Um, so just, again, once you draw them correctly, you're going to then be able to see and understand the proportion of each light, which really should be, I think matched as closely as possible in the new windows, um. Uh, granted, the new windows are bigger, so that just means proportionally, they're gonna be they're gonna be bigger unless you're enlarging all the existing windows, I'm just, I'm not convinced that they're drawn correctly. And lastly, um, I would uh kind of dovetailing on the corner board comment, which it looks to be at least a six inch wide corner board, possibly a little wider, um. Uh, I would, I, I would take care to look closely at the moldings used around the original windows um, and you can probably find a stock molding um very similar and, and rather than applying flat moldings and uh just something that is, that isn't um as specific to the site, I, I would just take a, a little bit more inspiration from this wonderful house that you have at your fingertips here, so um, the, the width of the molding, if it has a little profile um, its relationship to the windows, et cetera, and, and you notice here also because they were working shutters, the shutters actually are not, they're setting kind of on the inside face of the molding, not on the outside face because they by doing that, when they hinged, they closed and covered the windows.
Um, Justine and Chelsea, I just want to interject for a second, um, I'm looking at the standards uh, the general standards and criteria for this and it was stated that new additions uh, the new work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the historic materials, features, size, scale and proportion enassing to protect the integrity of the property and in its environment. So the commissioners should take that also into consideration when um giving some of these um uh, design thoughts, uh, and maybe one of those things is not putting uh, shutters on the new building to offer some distinction, that that is a new building. I don't think we would want anybody ever to drive up to it and think it was part of the original structure or had been built at the same time, so it does get very tricky on how we are distinctive um, but yet compatible.
Sorry, one um, very obvious distinction is that it, it is a very different scale, size and, and a double entry front, so I agree with you, but I do, a long time ago, I think we saw like a, a very modern building juxtaposed you know, as a, as a design consideration, I think it was on this project and that was fairly jarring, so I think we directed that um applicant back towards um, a little bit more of a building that, that does have some historic detailing. But I, I, your point, your point as well taken that, you know, we're not trying to match the existing building, but.
Nope, it's just a reminder.
Designed.
That's what the guidelines are stating.
Yeah, John, go ahead.
Yeah, um, first of all, Elizabeth, thank you for that reminder, I appreciate the reminder, um, and it's something that we often hold to um when reviewing these kinds of additions on historic structures, but I, I would advocate for keeping the shutters in this instance because there is so much wall mass on the new addition that the absence of the shutters will just make the building look fairly blank and soulless. And um, I think in this instance, the shutters might be warranted to prevent that. So, that, but, but I appreciate, if there's another way we can drive distinction between the two buildings um, I would, I would like to ask that we find that other way. Um, I'm not sure what that would be, but.
Hate them a different color, don't make them the same color.
Yeah, I, I was thinking the same thing, I thought it might be too trite to say that, but actually I agree.
Sorry for my triteness, but that's an easy.
No, no, I agree, that's why, I'm glad you said it.
Yeah, and so going back to the window, so the fenestration pattern is very similar to the historic building. So maybe what we look at is not putting um, like the six over six as proposed into the new building. So we're keeping the general shape, size of the fenestration but we're putting a different window into it to signal and that's been used on many um new additions for uh two historic buildings in the past around the city. Angela?
I think that's right, um, but my point is the original house has six over six, they're drawn as nine over nine.
Agreed, that does need to be.
So the nine over nine in the new building will be by definition different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right?
It will be different, but then does it reflect a different period?
Well, they're gonna be differently made windows, that's for sure. And I, 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 I don't think we're gonna, I don't know, I don't think this building is gonna fool anyone to think it's dates back that far, but.
We can, we can add the gas lantern light back in.
Um, Eileen, I have a question for you that it just.
LED type.
Just occurred to me here, um, at looking at this view. Are you, do you have the turning radius to get into these garages without? Like, did this, are, I know that.
We have that, yeah, we, we got the uh double wa, wider door there. We all got a narrow door in the back, it's only one car. So we have enough room to back in and pull out.
Okay, but it's two garages, so I'm just, just check your site plan because I know I, I keep getting a little bit confused as to like what building application you guys are working from because someone has to check that and it has to get approved by the plan and.
Yeah, the only thing we don't have signed off right now uh is making sure that we get all the things that you want in the plan, that's why I want to make sure that we get everything right. So we give it back here and you'll be happy with what you're calling out and make sure we follow your lead or whatever you're saying you want done with the dormers, the windows, the color of the building.
We'd also like, I'd like a clarification on your code um interpretation on the breezeway where you're considering that a connected structure. I'm not sure that flies, uh, it may have three years ago, I don't know if it does now, I, I just, I'd like you to be really careful because when you come to the commission for a final design review and then if, and so we give you a final design review, you've incorporated all of these wonderful comments that you've gotten tonight. I want to make sure that you know that you're going in with a building set that can achieve the things that we're asking for here, so. With your plans examiner again bef, uh, before you come to us again.
Yeah, we will, the thing is, uh, how long do you think it will be, because we're gonna have the, we're gonna expedite the plans to get everything into the plans you want and then we can work with someone at the commission to make sure that we got everything, how long do you think it is before we can get you to relook at it because we really wanted to actually get in the ground and get started.
I can review that timing with Eileen tomorrow, um, it depends on what hearing schedule you're gonna be able to hit. But I do, I just want to iterate that I, you really do need to bring this back to the building department again before you come to us.
Right, we will, we'll, 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 we'll get them uh resubmitted so they can uh re, but we, we look at everything you said, but you know, I just uh I, I was understanding that most of the stuff you talked about is just uh, you know the, the, the face of the shop, the overhang, the dormer sizes, the windows.
Well, it's not, I mean, if, if indeed you can't have this breezeway connection, then we're looking at something different if you can't have the driveway, I mean, at one point we looked at garage doors at the face of this building, so somewhere, somewhere, someone said in the past, like, oh, we can't make.
Well, th, this building is forward of the old building, this is smaller than the building you previously looked at. This isn't, this isn't the same mass as the other building.
Yeah, okay.
The other building had all types of violations that they, they'd have to go to the Board of Appeals for. We turned around and made it so I didn't think uh time period, it would look good for the garage door to be uh, at the, drive in from the front, it, it didn't work, it didn't give you the parking area, so we have like a, uh, we, we put extensive time into making sure that the building fit in the site and it actually looked nice, we weren't rushing that design, we wanted to make it look as much as possible, so with the, my mistake, of course, that the back building would look time period similar to the front building but I'm being, I'm interpreting that, that isn't the achievement that we want, we want to make the front building totally uh independent and distinct and it's the old building.
Not totally, so I think there's a little bit of miscommunication there where um and I can review the design guidelines with Eileen again tomorrow, but um, the idea is that you design a structure that is sympathetic to the existing building, but not matching exactly.
Well, uh, that's why we're here to, to, to gather your comments so we can go back and adjust our plan to meet uh, the uh, understanding of what you want to achieve here and uh, we want to make sure we, uh, if I known that originally, I would have designed the dormers to match the existing building, my, my fault, I apologize.
Great, Joe, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, this is Joe Cornish, Director of Design Review for the Landmark image, I just want to reiterate to Eileen and, and to the owner that.
Yeah, I just, this is Joe Cornish, Director of Design Review for the Landmarks Commission. I just want to reiterate to Eileen and and to the owner that um you know, this is an advisory review, so we're not voting tonight. You're not getting any plans approved. So you you know, you you what you need to do is to to hear the comments that you're hearing tonight, um, meet again with staff, and then eventually you'll you'll be coming back for a full design review. So this is just advisory review to get feedback from the commissioners.
Do you believe that we'll be able to come back and see you at our next meeting? Uh, hopefully that's next month. If it was a monthly, you guys could meet, or is it bimonthly?
We'll have to see. We, the design review is the fourth Tuesday of every month. Um, but I think we need to work at a staff level, you know, now that you have these comments from the commissioners, before you come back for a design review.
Yeah, and I, as I mentioned, we can work with this, with Eileen on the schedule.
Okay, it's just uh, you know, we, we don't want to become a failure like the last development. That's, that's one of the things we don't want to be. It's uh, and we we put a great effort into um trying to achieve the goal that uh we were hoping that you you'd be happy with. But we'll take your 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 comments and we'll uh expedite a set of plans back to you, and uh we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Justine, I think um at this point, you can um commissioners, well, we can take public comment. Um, there is a hand up from a neighbor. Um, but it's
Yep, I just want to make sure that the public comment that we're taking is on the design that we are reviewing. Um, you know, specifically. So just as a reminder.
Yep.
But we need to put the script up.
Oh, yeah. I have to share my screen, so.
Stop sharing. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ignore that I have to zoom through these. There we go. Um, and adjust the size.
All right, uh, members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the proposed uh, oop, I think. Uh, proposed design, we'll say.
I'm sorry.
Comments, comments will be timed by staff and limited to two minutes. Uh, please do not repeat comments that have already been made by others. Uh, to offer a comment, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at B L C at boston.gov. And I think we have Marty Glenn. You can unmute yourself, Marty.
Well, first of all, thank you for this presentation, and um we appreciate the fact that the owner has so thoughtfully come back with a proposal, and thank you to all of the commissioners. Every time I attend one of these hearings, I learn something from you. I actually wrote the petition, so um I do know a little bit about this house. And I have a few questions. One is that nothing has been said about green space and how much green space there is around the um the house with this proposal. So that that is one thing. Um, the other, another is that the existing house, um, which we really talk a whole lot about. The existing house has at the moment um aluminum storm windows on it, and I am wondering whether the proposal is to hopefully remove those, restore the original windows, and perhaps add interior storms. Um, I'd like to know if the intent is to sell these units as three condominiums. And last, well, actually, second to last, um, the um the garage, I have questions about the garages that um, how how necessary are those garages um to the to the project? And if they were eliminated and you could use that first floor space as living space, would there be enough room on the site to park the two cars presumably you've planned for? Um, and that would solve, I think, a number of the commissioners' questions about um roof height and the slope. Um, and I guess my last comment. Hope somebody's been writing these down. My last question, thank you. My last question is that um is about the shutters, that shutters are really hard. Um, but they need to be installed so that they look as though they could be closed as they would have been in eighteen thirty-six. Um, even though, of course, they will never be closed. They should be installed to look as though they could be and sized and positioned um to reflect that.
Okay. Do we want to take those kind of one by one here, Chelsea? So first of which was uh green space considerations? Um, Chelsea, I think you're muted, and Eileen, if you're responding back, you are also muted.
So this is a site plan that was in a a presentation that had been submitted. I know we saw an updated one, but I think this gives you a good sense of the green space. Is that true, Eileen?
Right, yeah. Um, in regards to, I think we should start talking about the the garage in the back, which is uh what's triggering all this asphalt driveway. We are, we we could, we could treat it differently uh with um pavers or gravel, so we can come back with a different material to kind of alleviate the the green space. Um, and yeah, we can use pavers. And in regards to the parking itself, um the the city does not allow you to have uh uh parking spaces uh tandem eh eh back to back. So we 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 need to ensure we're providing the proper park uh amount of parking spaces per unit, which in this case is one due to the amount of bedrooms. So we have to make sure we have that driveway clear with no parking.
Pa- parking's very important for the building, uh, and for storage. Uh we're trying to make a feasible project, and we're trying to take the existing historical structure and maintain it exactly the way you guys want it. And at the same time, make sure the design on the new section of the building matches what you want. I, you know, but at the same point, you gotta have have a have a a building that's uh worth living in or owning uh for the for the for the condo buyers or for uh the homeowner. Uh, to, you know, eh eh it's, you know, eh eh we we paid off as a half a million dollars for the for the building that's there, and it's, and you know, it has to make sense.
And I and I appreciate your comment, Marty, because uh I agree with you. If we would have eliminated the the garage on the first floor, it would have been a pretty straight shot for us to deal with with the building height, that it's one of the issues now in the pitches. Uh, but but thank you so much for your comment.
But we're usually, the neighborhood's usually the first part of the discussion to encourage off-street parking, but in this case, the considerations are different.
Yeah, there's no parking on the whole street. I mean, it's very tough to get a parking spot. There's so many multifamilies that don't have no parking whatsoever. Uh, we're next door to another building that has a a basically a parking garage in 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 an asphalt area that's you know, it's uh, it's it's unsightly, but that's what they have.
But so can I, can I just ask Marty's question a little bit? Was a finer point, and I, and I think we should move off of parking, because it's actually not exactly in our purview. You have enough room to do two outdoor side by side parking spaces at the rear of the property without doing a garage. So you can do parking, but but lower the building by not having a garage. So that's just something that I think you should consider. Look at a schematic.
But but for the, but for the units, uh, people like like a parking spot. You know, to park their car.
Yeah, they would have a parking spot, but not a covered garage spot, which is pretty common in Dorchester, so.
But but we're looking for, this isn't as a right project. So we're for design review and, you know, I'm just trying to make it so that it's just trying to bring to the point is that we're trying to give you everything you want, but at the same point, we gotta still have a building left.
You know, and and uh just to add in, uh, to say, I believe if eh I, and I totally get it. I see, I can envision where we can put two parking spots there, but my concern will be the maneuverability to to be able to come out of that space without that garage uh space in within the interior of the building.
And again, you're the, you're the architect here. You, I I think you should look at that schematic just as a possibility, because I think that would help a lot with the actual building.
Absolutely.
Um, Justine, do you remember what Marty's next comment?
Yes, um, so I think we should address the the comment about the storm windows. I think the comment about the shutters, uh, the install for functionality. I think we've covered the shutters. Um, but we'll carry through this comment for a design review, and I I don't believe we'll be commenting about um, selling and purchasing of the units. Um, but let's definitely talk about the aluminum storm windows. So those, um, so I think the question was, the existing building has, or the existing house has storm windows on the exterior. Are those being restored um and reused, replaced? Or would an interior storm um be utilized?
The intention was, uh, it's, uh, as we mentioned, um, in our presentation, was to basically to repair and replace the existing, uh, but uh it sounds more like um um, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh it sounds more like you want us to to bring it back to the actual original windows?
Well, the original windows are there, but they at the moment are covered by aluminum storm windows, which of course are not original. So if it were possible to re- to remove those windows, restore the existing windows with appropriate glass if if needed. Um, and to use interior storms, which would not um which which would kind of restore the eighteen thirty-six look to the to the house.
Understood.
Landmark.
Yeah.
Yep, and that's something we can talk about in our desk review, Eileen, where we might, you know, we could give you some ideas on interior storms.
Very good. Thank you.
Um, to that point, I would add, I mean, we have reviewed and approved exterior storm windows when historic windows are repaired. So and and there are new types that are much more sympathetic than what's on there now. Because we do have interior restrictions on this building too, and we wouldn't want to see any irreversible damage to moldings inside.
Thanks for the good questions, Marty. Uh, any other public comment?
Is he in any, Chelsea?
No, okay. Great. So Eileen, I'll talk to you tomorrow, and we can talk about schedule and desk review. Um, again, you know, and a a recording of this presentation is going to be available to you, so you don't have to remember all of this, but I saw you taking notes.
Yes, I did. A lot of notes. I appreciate it.
Yep, and um I think, Justine, we can move on.
Yeah, I think we'll close this uh this item. Um, and we are going to move on to uh staff updates. Chelsea, anything or team?
Um, the updates, the next B L C meeting will include the annual meeting, and the commission will vote to elect a chair and a vice chair of the Boston Landmarks Commission. Please let staff know if you are not available in advance of our hearing date on May thirteenth uh twenty twenty-five, and if anyone um has any other questions about the annual meeting um or the chair and vice chair positions, please let me know.
And the other thing we discussed tonight was just, um, commissioners, if you can try to remember every time you come into a hearing, if you can just put your hand up automatically with the little symbol, that just helps us make you co-hosts a little bit faster so that we can get going um sooner. Thank you. Commissioners, any comments, updates from you all?
Not hearing anyone. All right. Moving on to uh adjournment, uh, do we have uh anyone making a motion to close the hearing? I'm so sorry, I wasn't sure who that was.
Move to a turn.
Oh, thank you, John. And a second?
John O'Meadale.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, and we will have all voting uh with the exception of Haney. Uh, Jacques? Oh, sorry, we do this as a voice vote, so sorry. So all in favor of adjournment? Hi, thanks, guys.
Good job, Justine.
Oh, thanks. All right, we'll see y'all.